Okay, we have the video and so on up and running, sound activated as well. So this is, is this focused on Marshfield tonight?
This is City of Marshfield.
Okay, so this will be available for replay.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see, all right, this is me for me. With Francis not being able to be here tonight, so I guess I'm the dude in charge tonight. From there, help me out if you see that I'm jumping ahead too far or missing something, since this is my first time at this. This might be a semi historic moment. I don't know that a former teacher in this school district has ever led a school board meeting.
Oh, there we go.
Or here, for whatever. So, all right, here we go. Jenny, with the role, please.
Okay, so order of service.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Eucaetus?
Yes.
Mr. Neem?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Crenerty?
Yes.
Let the record show that Mrs. Bohan is absent.
Okay, next order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Has anyone not had the honor of this? How about Kathleen, help one of you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And that's Kathleen Mahoney, Q of our staff members. Are you still president of the union to this point?
Yeah.
All right, moving along, we need some motions for approval here. First of all, on our consent agenda, approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on July 8th, 2020. And do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Dan, second from Mark.
Yes.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. Neem?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Crenerty?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaetus?
Yes. Also, approval of minutes from the special meeting held on July 27th, 2020. We need a motion for approval for that also for you to approve. Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Kaja. Discussion, roll, please.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Crenerty?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaetus?
Yes.
Mr. Neem?
Yes.
All right, well then right along, approval of accounts for the month of July. We need a motion to approve, to approve from Mark?
Second.
Second from Sam. Roll, please.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Crenerty?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaetus?
Yes.
Mr. Neem?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Now we have a very, very big event, because as far as I'm concerned, having known this lady for, good Lord, I don't know, many, many, many years. And she pulled me out of any number of jams when I was her teacher. And I was one of the pains in her side by always hoping my grades liked and so on. But we have board recognition of Janet Meyer, our longtime overall secretary here at Marshfield High School. And I think, Ryan, you said you would like to open?
Just a couple of comments. Janet, if you wouldn't mind, while I was walking up here, maybe you could stand over here to Dale's right, so we can get you on camera as well. Dale, listening, it's a historic night with having a former staff member leave the board meeting. It's also a historic night because we've got one of our icons. It's the end of an era. I don't know if any of us ever thought this day would ever come. But after 47 years as serving as the high school principal secretary, the main go-to person of this building that we're in here this evening, I believe Friday was your final day after 47 years, Janet is going to be retiring. It had to happen eventually. You know, I don't know if the story is true. I think I've heard it a number of times that you graduated and after the weekend of graduating, you started working here in the main office immediately after that, and you've been here ever since.
Yes, I have.
So we're really truly honored to be able to have you here for the board meeting this evening, Janet, and to be able to take this opportunity to give some special recognition after just an incredible, incredible career as part of the district in being in the role that you've served here at Marshfield High School overall at that time. So I don't know if there's a little bit more, Dale, that you wouldn't mind sharing? You probably worked with Janet more than anybody in the room.
I'll have a comment or two, and then I'll take time to pass it around to any of the other board members. Janet, I'm very happy that you're going to experience the act of retirement. I think I sent you a little note on Facebook the other night that said, sit back and have one or two of your favorite beverages and relax. And I appreciate your efforts for the school district more than you can possibly imagine. And you were very helpful to me as a teacher all the way through and to many, many teachers. And if the teachers are the glue that holds the school district together, I don't want to call you glue, because I'm sure you want to do a horse master. But this is the glue for Marshfield High School for 47 years. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Much love. Thank you. I have a presentation for you when we're done here.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Thank you, very impressive, seeing you're here. And I apologize that we have shown no children.
And I have to say, as the relative newbie here, I felt as much sentiment in my heart as Dale does, knowing that you're heading out now. You made us feel so comfortable, everyone walking in the door, as though we'd have been there forever. And the things that you helped me with were just amazing as I was first trying to figure out everything. And I think I had more questions for you than maybe any other new person, but I do appreciate all those answers. You made it very easy, thank you.
Thank you for your many years of service. I recently retired after 35 years, so 47 years is a light monumental moment. So congratulations and thank you on your retirement.
Thank you so much.
Beth, anything to add?
I'm a 22-year administrator here, and you make me feel like a lightweight. I'm a lot of senior administrator right now that we have in this country. Probably mentioned that. Good luck with your job, so great work of your services.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Mike? I know you're not a board member, but anything from you that you'd like to add?
No, we obviously, we're very busy with the staff. It's hard to put in the words what she has meant with every building principal that's worked at her place, and so on, to just the day-to-day schedule, she's placed, schedule and so forth. But we all paid a little tribute to her last week. And to be honest, I gave a joke to Steve Suwali when we first took the job and had him on the map, and he said, "Good luck, Steve, because you're probably going to be the principal here from January to April." And I don't want, I wouldn't want to be in that position again.
That's karma.
So who's going to steer the ship? That's either the next question, I'm sure, or the line. How many principals did you, pardon me, go through?
Think of a salad.
Salad principals, true. We've had some, like Jenny Myers, for example, that was there and worked a very long time. We've had some of varying terms at the high school. So on behalf of the school district and on behalf of the school board, I'd like to present you with this as a gift. And you'd also have a little something else for you to review the board's decision.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
I'd like to shake your hand and give you your hug.
Maybe McDonald's once again.
She knows where to find me. When my grades were due and they weren't in yet, she knew where to find me.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else you'd like to offer?
No, it's been great working, being a student here and then following up and being and working as a staff member. And I'm looking forward now to just coming and watching sporting events eventually and being part of the public. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, where are we here? Communications from the public, I understand that we have two persons that would like to speak. I would like to remind you of what we extended three minutes a little last time when we were in the throes of coming up with our final return to school plan. The limit is three minutes, try to stick as close to that as you possibly can. I will call Jennifer Anderson first from 105268. Is that Tarnet or Tanner Drive?
Tanner.
Okay, if you could come up, please, we'd like to have you stand out here so we can also get you on camera, maybe come this way a little bit, and then maybe turn sideways just a little.
People behind you.
Spin around three times.
He's going to move the camera so you can...
Am I allowed to remove my mask?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that's easier for you.
Okay, because I want to be nice and loud. I will project. Okay. Hello, my name is Jennifer Anderson, and I have three children who are current or past students of Marshfield School District. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the experience of my youngest son, my son who is adopted and black. He's been the victim of harassment based on his race on nearly a weekly basis at school. He was first exposed to the N-word in third grade. And here's this weekly, either in conversation or as a direct insult. As a side note, my high school student hears it used frequently in the hallways as well. Before my son was called the N-word, children called him things like brown poop as a way to point out his differences and degrade him. On Wednesday, November 9th, the day after Donald Trump was elected president, another child at his school told my son that President Trump was going to fix it so that your king kind can't go to our school. Not much has changed with my son's move to middle school. Now students ask my son for the N-word task. If you're not familiar with that, please let me explain. In the minds of our white middle school students, if a black student gives you permission, then you can use the N-word anytime or place that you like. An especially painful experience from this past school year was when another student told my son, "My grandfather used to own your people." Sorry, this is a thing for me. Unfortunately, this kind of harassment is not limited to students. In 2012, a Lincoln School music teacher was reprimanded for telling several students that they were too dark-skinned to play Lincoln in a school play. In 2016, two high school students violated the district's non-discrimination policy while casting for the spring play, The Sound of Music. These examples of daily racial harassment give you a window into what systemic racism looks like, if you take the opportunity to see it and not turn away. If you want to see some of the impacts of this, look no further than at this school's district's report card. Some of our lowest scores are in the areas of closing gaps. These scores we obtain in this area would not be acceptable to us in any other area assessed. We are better than this. Other impacts are on personal mental health. My son struggles every day with overwhelming anxiety and low self-worth. And he is not the only one. Recently, at the Just Justice event organized by local youth to support the Black Lives Matter movement, other teenagers from this school district shared their similar experiences of racial harassment. I also brought with me a letter I received back in October of 2017 from this very board, and it described findings that a parent violated school board policies 2260 and 5517 when she used language that exhibited harassment on the basis of race while discussing my son with multiple other parents on school property. In this letter, the board promised to provide training for staff and students focused on non-discrimination and equal education. I do not know if this was ever undertaken.
Three minutes, please, we keep going, finish up.
Today, I will ask you to make good on the promise, on this promise district-wide. I will ask you to bolster both of these policies so that they actually have teeth. It's not enough anymore to respond to these incidents as if they were minor infractions. We need a progressive plan to actively work towards making Marshfield School District a fair and safe place for minority students. I am tired of fighting this battle every day for my son, calling to follow up on every racist comment. I'm angry for all the injustice that he has had to suffer, and even angrier when these racist comments from other children go ignored and unpunished. I need some allies in this fight. And frankly, it's this board's job and the law to protect and advocate for non-discrimination and equal education opportunities for every student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It has been the policy in all of these situations where the public has time to go up and address the board. Since this is not part of our agenda, there is no comment or no action taken by the board, basically based upon what agenda and so on we have in front of us. Our next speaker is Kathleen Mahoney of 710 North Antone.
I know I've got a practice teaching in a mask, but can I take mine off, too?
Sure.
It's a little less intimidating in front of teenagers, so. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Marshfield Teachers Association. So as educators in the school district of Marshfield, we are dedicated to providing the best possible education for our students. We love our students, and we want to be a source of encouragement and stability for them. We know nothing can replace the community that staff and students build when they spend the day together. As we approach the reopening of schools this fall, the Marshfield Teachers Association would like to reaffirm that we have missed our students and we are proudly committed to their education despite the uncertainties of this time. Of course, there are natural tensions some of us feel between our professional calling to teach and care for our students and concern for the health and safety of ourselves, our families, and our students. However, as Marshfield educators, we are committed to working with district personnel, community stakeholders, and parents to provide the safest possible learning environments for students and staff. As this district continues to work on defining the specifics of our reopening procedures, it's important to acknowledge that we do not teach in a bubble, but instead are a reflection of the Marshfield community. Because our students deserve nothing less than a high-quality and consistent education, it greatly depends on the choices that this greater Marshfield community makes in the following weeks and months. The Marshfield Teachers Association is proud to be part of the district, whose mission reflects a commitment to children, excellence, and the community. In this fluid situation, we know that while plans are created, things will change along the way. But the more we work together as board, administration, and staff, the more successful we will be. Continue to let us help you craft policies for teachers and guidelines that balance clarity with flexibility. Let us be your pulse on what works best for students and what can work better. Let us help you look for courageous and innovative routes to ensure the social, emotional, and wellness of students and staff and for racial justice solutions. We know our leaders and community are committed to the safety and learning of our students. Marshfield educators are committed as well. And we hope all of us will face the challenges of the school year with compassion, collaboration, and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. Moving on to acceptance of gifts.
Just if I could just, Dale, just one quick note I'd like to make is also under the communications, I just wanted to note, because this is a little bit unique. We did put, we normally have a correspondence folder that gets passed around, but there were more than a few documents, so we just put it in electronically for you to be able to review that. So, sorry, Dale, I just wanted to specify.
No, I just can skip over that, we know about it on occasion. All right, moving on for acceptance of gifts. Pardon me. Marshfield Area Girl Scouts donated 300 bucks of cookies valued at $1,500 to the district's free lunch distribution program, $100 for Marshfield Middle School Literacy Garden from Vicky Majeris, pardon me, and tumblers for the 2020 graduates valued at almost $2,000, $1,941.74 from the Education Fund through the Marshfield Area Community Foundation. Do I have a move to approve that? Move.
Second.
Who had the second?
Second.
Sam.
Sam for the second. Take the roll, please.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Crenerty? Mr. Eucaetus?
Yes.
Mr. Neem?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Seasonal allergies are definitely getting seasonal out here. Policy and legislation is next, and boy, oh, boy, we have a number of items here.
Well, policy did meet on July 22nd, and we went through a mess of policies, rectification. This was the first reading. There would be no action taken on the vast majority of these, and the final item is later, I do your business for action. There wasn't, most of these are Neola updates, legal updates, just becoming consistent with state federal policies. There was not much of substance adjusted in any of them along the way. I know Dorothy would always read these out. Do I have to read all of them out?
Not for first reading, because it's just first reading. Okay, that will be different.
I think we've just kind of listed them.
Everybody can see that the list, there were...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-five different policies, thirty-six different policies. The final one is an update on non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities, and we will see that later in the meeting. Future items are going to be more Neola updates, and that's about it.
Yeah, and if I could just add, Karen, for people in the public viewing the program, I think it's good now and again to provide some reminders that we work with a group called Neola that through the service they provide us are very good at keeping track of law changes that happen over time to update all of these policies specific to changes in state statute, for example, that get passed at the state level. And there's also a review board that vets out recommendations that school districts has as a consortium, put through in the way of tweaking and adjusting the policies to fit to the needs of districts. So that's a lot of what drives this, and then we go through a review process to make sure it fits with how we operate at the district level. So while the report out here at this level is pretty quick, it's, there are many hours behind the work that's involved in the updates that we see on the agenda here, and board members not on the committee have the ability to review the details of those edits and pass, raise questions at the meeting like this, or pass thoughts on to the committee members for the next round of review for second reading.
And certainly for agendas such as this and the upcoming ones, we do do a lot of homework before the meeting, we do a lot of discussion during the meeting, and then we will see everything for a second reading and get the final touches on it. Sam, Dan, do you have anything to add to the, your recollection of the meeting?
With the one last?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, nothing for an action item tonight from your group at all?
What the hell, why?
No, not on this, it's on, under new business later.
And we can provide more explanation at that time on why it was brought forward right away.
Okay, all right. Mark, pass this to you. I am the chair of the Employee Relations Committee. So a quick update on our last meeting from August 4th. The district has received a rebate from the Security Health Plan premiums, and it's based upon a lower utilization rate of healthcare this past spring by all staff. And the Security Health Plan is issuing a premium rebate that the school district, a portion of that amount will be reimbursed to staff, but the way it's going to be reimbursed is on some of your future year checks, some of your future premium payments that you have to make that will not be an immediate rebate to them. Can you comment on that? Okay. We have an employee handbook addendum. A number of items will be outlined in separate addendums to the employee handbooks. The district intends to follow the CARES Act while being reasonable and as accommodating as practicable for staff in unique situations. So a lot of this stemmed from calls that a number of us had received from staff about what the district will be doing about sick days, usage of sick days, or whether sick days are counted because of being sent home due to COVID, and a number of those types of items right now. And that was basically a good portion of our discussion at that point. Anybody else on my committee want to make a comment there or anything for you to add? Right? I don't know, Sam, should be able to...
No, this is all related to COVID, the situation, the COVID situation, and that we're distributing that information to employees in a condensed version as well as an expanded version in the handbook online, and that should be helpful for anyone if they have questions about how to handle the situations at times of...
Right, staff will be receiving more information on that and assuring staff that there is some allowance there due to federal acts, the CARES Act, and so on, that will allow for what happens with sick days and payments and those types of things coming forward.
I guess just a little bit more that I would add is as the introductory paragraph on the addendum outlines, the provisions in this addendum are specific to COVID-19-related matters. This would be an add-on to the regular handbook. The intent of this would be that it's applicable for the continuation of this COVID-19 public health emergency period that we're in. You know, depending upon how long that ends up lasting, this is not something that's necessarily intended to be a permanent feature or add-on to the handbook, but we go through an annual review of the handbook, which happens in the second half of the year. So hopefully we'll have a better idea at that time, how this may be reviewed or revised at that time or given further consideration as far as moving forward. But you'll also notice in the wording that it does specify that this is subject to change, you know, depending upon changes that occur with the COVID-19 pandemic.
I think the phrase "subject to change" might be a good name for a horse in a horse race, because everything comes out with "subject to change."
And I did think of just one additional detail. Dale, if I could jump in, and I know that we specified this at the committee meeting, is that as far as the emergency leave allowances that are part of the CARES Act, that is currently slated to run through the end of this calendar year, December 31st. We'll continue to wait to see if anything's worked out at the federal level on extending that. We would be hopeful that that is the case, but that, I think it's important to make note of that as far as the allowances in conjunction with the CARES Act, that is, by the law slated to run through this calendar year pending an extension.
Some other items that we have talked about regarding that is, the district does use an absence management system that staff can use at any time, and there will be some adjustments made there due to personal leave and for conference leaves, and I think staff should avail themselves of a document to find out what those might be. I think all can understand that a key issue that the school district is going to have at all levels this year is presence of staff. What are we going to do? We have X number of teachers possibly out on a COVID leave or whatever it is. What are we going to do for subs? How many subs are going to be available out there nowadays with the type of pandemic situations and things that we have going? So all of those things are laid out in the addendum as well as information that is available through the Employees Rights Document in the CARES Act as well. Revised the academic calendar, there was a slight change in that the academic calendar has been adjusted to align with the cohort model. Its originally scheduled vacation days for the district have not changed. Proposed calendar adjustment includes seven reinforcement catch-up days per semester for a total of 14 across the academic year. for a total of 14 across the academic year. The committee also consented to move the calendar for approval at the August 12th board meeting. So I guess we're at that point right now for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Well, I believe that was forwarded out of committee, so.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will forward that and forward from committee, and I guess we don't need any kind of a second act at all. We need basically just the roll, Jenny. I need to.
We need to the employee handbook as well.
Yeah.
The addendum needs to be approved as well.
Uh, yeah, we're approving the addendum at this point, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the addendum. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Sam.
Karen.
Under the return to work procedures, was that from Wood County Health? Was it from? I'm just wondering where the guidelines were coming from, and because they look, you know, very, very typical and standard, but the employee who's been exposed to a person with COVID-19 is on an automatic 14-day quarantine, and sometimes, particularly with, for essential workers, there's a caveat where you could be tested seven days after the exposure, and if you're negative, the majority of people will have converted, and you would have tested positive. Was there any discussion about that, or?
So I think if I could start with the first or main question that you asked, and I believe you're talking about page five of the document, if other board members want to turn to that if you're looking online. My recollection, and I'm going to ask Nicole Labor to maybe chime in on this in a second, but I believe that the guidelines that you see there came directly from CDC guidance.
Okay.
Yes, so that came, and Nicole is nodding her head and saying yes over here. So that's where we drew that upon, so that, just to try to explain, the framework of guidance was coming from the CDC, and then did you have specific? I, I didn't catch the tail end of what you're asking, Karen, sorry.
I just wasn't sure if that was going to be the across-the-board story that as long, once you were exposed, it was an automatic two-week, you know, at-home quarantine, because sometimes some employers have been allowing a seven-day test, you know, seven days post-exposure, and if you're negative, then you're allowed to come back to work. It was no symptoms with, and this is the exposure with no symptoms.
So there, in addition to the CDC guidelines that you see here, there is some advisory materials that are still in draft form from Wood County Health Department that they have talked to us about as far as how they're going to handle a contact tracing. So from a contact tracing standpoint, if a staff member were to be identified as, as exposed to an individual that tested positive, that would be the starting point, or default would be a 14-day quarantine. Now, I believe the algorithm that they're working on does also work in some provisions along the lines of what you're talking about on if they do go and get a test, but I don't think it's immediate return. I think it's still like a 24-hour period after receiving the results, the negative results, to make sure that there aren't symptoms that, but I'd have to go back and look at the full detail of the algorithm that they're working on.
And also, it's my understanding that those 14 days start with the date of exposure. They may not get contacted for five days, so it may mean that they are indeed working for five days before they've been contacted, that they did have an exposure, so that the 14-day count starts with the day that they were exposed. So they may have already worked, it may not be as many days, 14 days off of work, because the count starts at the, at the point of exposure.
But as with all things COVID, it's also subject to change.
Okay.
Great.
Do we have any more questions?
So if I, and I, if I'm reading the flow chart on the algorithm, the draft algorithm that they've been working on, if they are, do fit that, that they are describing here, return to school requirements would be after a negative testing, would be no fever symptoms for 24 hours after the negative test results.
Does it say when they're doing the tests for an exposed person? This is an asymptomatic exposed person.
Well, now, this is another important detail, is that this is not automatic testing. We're not in an automatic testing situation, so to be clear, if we're, if the scenario we're talking about is a staff member has been asked to self-quarantine, or let's say a whole classroom, we have a student in a, in a classroom with 24 kids and a teacher are being asked to self-quarantine because a student has tested positive, that entire group, if we don't have evidence to suggest that they weren't within that six-foot period of time for a cumulative 15-minute period, 15 minutes in a, in a class day, they would be asked to self-quarantine. That is not initiate, require testing. I mean, there would be some advisement that go to those individuals to contact a healthcare professional to maybe be referred for a test, so a test may or may not happen. So that adds a little bit to the complexity here on top of how many days is it before they get the test and when the results come back? So I think that that's part of what the additional cautionary detail is in the algorithm that they're working on right now.
Might be the first.
I think just Karen's point would be that if they found out and then immediately got a test that day and the exposure was the day before and it was negative, that, and they waited 24 more hours, that is not enough time.
That's not enough.
There has to be a cushion of time before they get the test and then 24 hours. I don't know exactly, that, that numbers that are thrown around these days are right around the 20th of the week or a little bit less, but it's not that you can bring a clean bill of health by getting tested. It's a very, very short period of time when you're exposed.
And this is not speaking to when to test after initially being asked to quarantine. It's not saying wait 10 days before you do the test. It's really not.
Or it's not.
Doesn't have that level of detail on this flow chart that I'm looking at.
Okay. And that's, that will come when it comes, and we'll just adapt based on guidance.
Right. So, and I think this is probably, you know, especially for, for viewers that, that may be watching the, the meeting is to, because this was shared with the board during our executive session, is just to note that the Wisconsin Department of Health Services is also working on advisory toolkit documents, that they're going to be releasing to school districts, which might have the greater detail along the lines of, of what you're pointing out, Karen and Gaudel, right now. Those advisory documents are supposed to be coming out at any time, or hopeful this week, perhaps by the end of this week, but we don't know for certain when that's going to be available. And, and again, hopefully we'll have additional details from, from those materials at the DHS level.
Any comment? Go ahead. Do we have any more discussion? Just an additional comment. The information that Ryan is sharing, I think you've heard about some of this yesterday for the first time, is that correct, from your meeting with other superintendents and some of the types of things that are being brought forward, just to give us an idea of not only the term "subject to change," but an immediate need-to-know basis?
Actually, five hours ago, this afternoon, was, was when we got an update on, on these materials that are being worked on right, right now.
And you were being constantly told, you've been told for well over a week that the State Department of Health is going to come forward with these new guidelines, and so far it will go, so I guess, you know, to be determined. Any more discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the roll.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neev?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Okay, now we can go to the academic calendar. Thank you, Martin, for putting me back on track here. I scrolled down too far over the handbook addenda. The revised 2020, 2021 academic calendar is now out. The calendar has been adjusted to align with the cohort model. Originally scheduled vacation days have not changed from the calendar that was released recently. Proposed calendar adjustment includes seven reinforcement or catch-up days per semester for a total of 14 across the academic year. And from what I understand, these are being considered as instructional days and instructional minutes as well. The committee consented to move the calendar, to make a motion to move the calendar for approval at this meeting tonight, so on behalf of the committee, I am making the motion to approve. And on behalf of the Employee Relations, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any discussion?
Can you please make a clarification to the public about these additional days that each has mentioned in terms of their status as instructional days for the students and working days for the teachers, just to, so that the parent is thinking that there's whatever, seven more days a semester that they're not in school, that's not exactly what this is. I just hope that Ryan can clarify a little bit.
So to begin with, and, and to be clear, they are, they're non, they're not in-person days. These are days that students would be doing learning from home work. Our staff will be at, at, at work and performing work duties, but the idea that we have from a teaching and learning standpoint would be that there's some sort of, in the way that teachers are doing lesson planning, some sort of work set up for the students to be doing from home, at least as a minimal exercise, with some additional time built into, do one, one or the other for a student who's caught up or excelling, to provide some enrichment opportunities. On the other side, if students are falling behind a little bit, it does build in some reinforcement time opportunity for them to catch up. So they are, they're instructional days in terms that students will have expectations placed upon them, but it will be at-home learning.
Okay, so when you talk about that additional reinforcement, also for whatever curriculum, does that mean that a student can contact the teacher on those days, or could a teacher ask a student possibly, or could a student request to come in and see the teacher?
You know, the, the final details of how that workday for teachers is structured is still, is still being developed. There may be a chunk of time that is identified for like the equivalent of some office hours or maybe answering email communication and, and things of that nature, but there's other work responsibilities that teachers are going to have placed upon them for a variety of different things. Some of it might be professional development, some of it might be record-keeping, because two of these days per semester for a total of four for the year are placed at the end of a grading period where staff are going to be needing to do report cards as well.
Do we have any more discussion? Seeing none, Jenny, please take the roll.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neev?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And we move to finance for our next report.
Okay, while we had a finance committee meeting today, a little bit earlier today, the first thing we went over was the budget and upcoming budget projections for the food service group, and I guess the one interesting thing to note for everyone with food services, of course, they've been packaging and have been providing meals throughout this whole COVID time period where school has not been in session up through the summer, up until today, and that's been great. I think that's, that's been wonderful for a lot of families, and of course, there are funds available from the government for, for us to be able to do that without having to pull from other areas. The other two things that were discussed today were the budget for the upcoming year, and then as a completely separate topic, the budget for the period of time following that. Couple of important details for the budget for the upcoming year. Obviously, it's been upended for a number of reasons. One, we have an incredible number of additional expenses associated with safe COVID preparation. Dr. President shared that in a superintendent's meeting, when they looked through what the CDC guidelines are telling schools to do, a school of our size can be expected to spend well over a million dollars on everything from cleaning supplies to the additional materials needed to separate people and the additional people they needed to take care of students as they get sick. That is one change in the budget. Another change, or potential change in the budget for the upcoming year has to do with whether the state government is going to do some reconfiguration based on the projected shortfall from tax earnings because of what the economy has done since COVID. So that's, that's another change, and then of course, our responsibility as a group is to make sure we're good stewards of money, that, that whatever we do going forward takes all those things into account and do the best we can with less information than we normally have to get through that year. The reason that we were talking about the budget for school years going forward is we were coming to the end with this upcoming school year of the period of time that's covered by the prior referendum. And just going back historically, we've needed this referendum since the early 90s, when a cap was set on how much money we were allowed to get without going through the referendum process, and that happened to, to be aligned with the year that Marshfield School just spent abnormally low amount of money on schools. So going forward since that time, we've gone through this referendum process to try to bring us closer to line with what a school district ought, you know, a school should be spending, and we are still at the low end of school districts around the state. So we're in the process of putting together the referendum that goes on a ballot in November in order to continue that cushion of money that we've had in recent years to allow us to continue the same kind of operational things we've had until now. There is a cut list that needs to be made, and we went over that as sort of a first reading in finance, to say if we were not to get this referendum passed, what are the changes that would have to be made for not this upcoming school year we're about to enter, but the school year after that, that would be different from what we've done up until this point? It would mean a reduction in services to students, a reduction of COVID in terms of the academic curriculum, extracurricular activities, support staff, facilities, everything. So that list has been made, and what we need to do tonight as a board is approve the resolution of how this is going to be worded on the ballot. It comes into two parts. We're going to approve the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by, and the number for this upcoming period of time is three and a half million. The last one we did was, I believe, three million even. So that's one action item. The other action item is specifically the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the resolution that gives the three and a half million. It is worded now as three and a half million for recurring purposes, so when we get into the opening discussion, we can talk about that a little more if we need to. So those are the two motions that I'm going to bring forward on behalf of the committee. Oh, I will do the first one, and then we can have a discussion. So approval of resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by 3.5 million for recurring purposes.
Do we have a motion?
So that was.
On behalf of your committee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, because it's.
I have one point to make, since you brought up the idea of the cut list, because this is an aside, I realize, but the cut list is still going to be whittled down and maybe worked on in more detail, and that will be eventually presented to the board for a vote for approval. That has been traditionally what we've done in the past, I believe, on that as well, so. So at this point, time to take the roll.
Okay. Mr. Neev?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll get to the, the next one, which has to do with the, the election, and this is going to be part of the November election. This is something that we had a discussion about. Obviously, you know, it's never a great time to ask people for money, but it's especially kind of heart-wrenching to think that a lot of people are suffering economically and are saying, oh, we're, we're asking for money. It's just a reminder that actually, we are not asking for more money in a sense, and whatever this is, the, the change that this would, some very small change that this would affect people who pay property taxes in the Marshfield area, doesn't go into effect until, not this coming December, but the following year. And on the converse, if one were to say, oh, I am struggling for money, I'm going to vote no on the referendum, you would not be seeing a lower tax bill this year. So just to clarify why, you know, this is going into this November election, the financial ramifications of this, or the loss of services to the school district, and the small change in the, the tax bill is not for this coming school year. So a move to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by 3.5 million for recurring purposes.
Any further discussion?
I just think it's important to emphasize that this is not, I, I was concerned about the term cushion. This isn't a cushion. This is, this is to keep. the term cushion. This isn't a cushion. This is, this is to keep us going, to have these funds available as they have been for, you know, the past, how many years? Like, many years. There's a need for this, not as an add-on, but as a necessity to keep our schools going because of what happened in the, in the late 90s that gave us sort of the short end of the stick in terms of what the state is going to do, what the state provides for us. And so it's just, it's just the state of the situation that we have to make up for that in order to keep a high quality of, of education in this district. If this isn't for frills or for extras, this is to keep what we have available as, as, as a shining star here in Marshville.
More information will be coming out, I'm sure, marketed at that time regarding the need and the purpose for this referendum. Again, I would like to echo, this referendum applies for things upcoming, starting the 2021, 2022 school year. And there's a lot of commentary out there about, well, you know, you're going to talk about cutting some of these things, and well, you're going to cut them anyway this year because of COVID and stuff. None of that really applies to this, because those are items that we're looking at potentially for this fall already, and things that we have already eliminated or we might have to eliminate, or whatever kind of adjustments that we have to make. This is going forward in our district's future. We have done this before. November has always been looked at as a prime time to do that, because it is a national, or whatever you want to call it, election. And usually, there is a larger voter turnout. And having been involved in these in the past, sometimes it was recommended that we try one into February, or we try one in April. And when that kind of discussion came around, it was always some commentary from the public that, oh yeah, you want to try to slip this by in some sort of a referendum vote, when, you know, the turnout might not be very good. So the district has purposely, in the past, gone to this November-type national election. No, it's not a great time to do it necessarily, but it's something that needs to be done with the district. And that's the end of my commentary. Okay, you have already presented a motion?
Yep.
All right, so then we need a vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Okay, more information on those things will be coming out in the future. Meeting update for facilities, safety, and transportation. Mark?
Yes, we did meet. First, your business, and we discussed the Maple project. Aaron, Aaron Haig said the job is coming along nicely. The quality of work is beautiful. He's very happy with it. The expected completion date is for August 28th, just in time. Then we discussed athletic facility, we had an update on athletic facilities. The baseball and softball fields at the high school campus, they said we're near completion. When I drove by today, it looked very nice. The grass is growing. Seen a few weeds out in the field. I'd like to see them pull, but it looks good. Up at the middle school, we've got ongoing projects at the middle school, including the track, practice, baseball, shot put, and discus. The track, I see, has dirt in the middle of it now. Looks very good. The only thing I don't remember is what Aaron said about the rubber being applied on top of the blacktop when that was going to be coming. But I know it sounded like that was a little while ago. Does anybody else remember?
She didn't give us a specific date, but it was something that would be done in the near future.
There had to be a certain amount of time for basically off-gassing the first layer before they put the second layer on, was it any weeks? I can't remember the details.
It was quite unique with what they're going to be doing. So with the blacktop laid on the track, they'll be laying a layer of the special rubber. Now, here's the blacktop. So it'll make it a lot easier to run on and jog on and walk. So. And then we filed a discussion on We Energies. We Energies is requesting an easement along Palmetto Avenue, 12-foot easement. And the reason that's coming to the board is we want to have a vote on this, so that we have this in our records that, yes, we did give an easement for future boards. So if there's any building projects that go on, or anything that happens, that we have this. So with this easement, it sounded like this gas line that they're going to be putting on was going to be for masonry. So that's a real good thing for a growing business for Marshfield. So I move, or the committee, facilities and safety would like to move to approve the We Energies easement request along Palmetto Avenue.
All right, so we have a motion on behalf of the facilities committee for that easement. Any further discussion?
I have one thing.
Okay.
There was a question brought up about the trees along Palmetto. And Aaron had said that We Energies would do everything they can to go around to preserve the trees.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, Jenny, please.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
I think that's all I have. If there's any questions, I need to.
Thank you, Mark. By the way, since we're on that facilities, and you mentioned all the stuff going on at the middle school, people might want to take a drive around that area right now to find out what's going on. And also a reminder that all of these athletic facility improvements that are being made throughout the district, especially at the high school and the middle school, are a result of a lot of donated money. Majority of it is donated money from various individuals, companies, and so forth, through the community foundation. And so that's something to consider. And it's also, I think, a sign of the kind of community that we have here that supports facilities and education.
Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to use.
Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to use, if there's no guarantees, the way things are going right now. Apparently, curriculum instruction did not meet. Does that sound right?
Correct.
Okay. I guess we're in time for new business. And I usually handle the retirements, resignations, and whatever new personnel, but Sam Steiner has agreed to do that tonight.
So I would like to bring forth, as an individual, board member, approval of the following resignations. Jessica Andrews, the health assistant from the high school. Jeffrey Fisher, a sixth-grade teacher at Madison. Hope Flink, district office clerical assistant at the district office. Cara Jones, an English teacher at the middle school. Seth Cundinger, a transportation aide in special education for the, works for the district. Miles Langfeldt, a custodian, second shift at the middle school.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second on the approval of the retirements as mentioned or as listed.
Resignations.
Resignations.
What did I say?
They're resignations. Yeah, they're not retirements.
I meant retirements.
Resignations.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. Of retirements.
Well, rest of the resignation.
Resignations.
Resignations. I think you said retirements the first time.
We don't have any retirements.
Ah, okay.
There's no retirements.
Just looking at what I have in front of me here on the screen, and I'm not reading it correctly, apparently. Good job, English teacher. Any further discussion? And time for the vote.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Moving on.
And so next, I'd like to bring forth the approval of employment of new personnel. Daniel Henseller, a maintenance technician for the district, replacing Aaron Haig. Chris Delina Herman, a special education program assistant for the district. And that's a, that's a new position that we approved on, back in July. And Chelsea Marco, a library media center assistant in the middle school, who will be replacing G. Bell.
Should I go? Discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to talk about the hiring of new personnel. Any further discussion? Take the role, please, Jenny.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
And lastly, the approval, I would like to bring forth, the approval of new support staff appointments. There's just one. It is Laura Sosterman to be the principal secretary at Madison, and she will be replacing Kathy Sheplo.
Second.
We have a motion and a section, a second, to approve the support person hiring. Discussion. Role, please.
Ms. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay, finished? All right. Now we have an action item listed. It's approval of policy 2266. So does this have to come through policy, or where are we going to be on this initiative?
This was the item that was made reference to before, so I'll just give a little bit of background, and then see if, if perhaps somebody from the committee wants to make the motion as an individual board member. But the, a pretty significant updated legislation that's coming from the federal government is updates to Title IX, sex discrimination. This is a federal mandate that has come down, but albeit it's coming to us very quickly and very late. The, by law, this Title IX legislation is to take effect as of the 14th, which is this Friday, August 14th. But we didn't get this stuff until just a couple of weeks ago. So, which was after the, the July board meeting that we had previously. So we do have within our bylaws, which is referenced as an attachment in, in board docs, 0131.1, that does allow you to put into effect immediately upon, as an action item by vote, the approval of a policy like this. It would take effect immediately. That would put us on target to meet the August 14th deadline. And then, as you'll notice in the bylaws, it's just a matter of, at our next regular board meeting, we would have to do, as a second step, a final approval. If we did not, it would, it would expire immediately. So what we're looking to do here is exercise a provision within your bylaws that allows us to expedite the approval of a policy, in this case, a new policy, which we are recommending we do because we need to meet the federal government's deadline of August 14th. So that's the overview. Hopefully, that covers it. I don't know if there's anything more I can add.
No. But I do know there's going to be some small, minor discussion. So I will move approval of the policy 2266, not discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities.
Are you doing that as a committee member or as an individual?
No, I think just as a board member.
So we need a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the approval of that policy. Any further discussion?
I have a very minor point that I'm just discovering how it happened. Jenny, I had spoken with you earlier about the version of this that I was seeing that didn't have some pages. That's been, I, the version that you have posted for our action item is correct. So we were looking at two different things, I think. So I had one very, very minor, this is kind of the detail that we end up doing sometimes on, on policy, is really just catching tiny little things that are, for example, a sentence that says, "The decision maker is to, it will be, is to be delivered to the complainant and the respondent." And it's on page 17 of the first version, the last paragraph on the, of the version that is listed under our committee report. It's so minor, but I think maker is supposed to be there. It's supposed to be that the decision is delivered, you know?
The decision maker, decision maker is actually a role in that process.
Is that decision maker is going to be delivered to, on the, on the, on the first, and if you, if you, if we should look at this, looking at the first version on page 17, the last paragraph.
Yeah, I'm going to pull up. And to explain what, what Sam is getting at, is when the committee initially looks at these policies, there's a track change version, which shows add-ons and strike-throughs. And so it makes a document longer by having all those track change details. What is in board docs for the agenda tonight is the cleaned-up version, where all of that is taken out, so it's more condensed. So I've got the old version pulled up, Sam, because it was on page 17.
Yeah, the bottom, the last paragraph of page 17. The determination.
The point when the decision maker, or the appeals decision.
Yeah. Okay, excuse me. Let's see. Okay. You know what? Let's let that go. Okay. I will, it's, it's now not coinciding with where I thought that it was. So I apologize.
And I believe it's going to be time to, to care.
Yes. Let's, let's, we will, we will have an opportunity to just, okay, here it is. Okay, actually, okay, here it is. "The determination or responsibility associated with a formal complaint, including, becomes final when..." One, one, a conditional, "or at the point when the decision maker for the appeals decision, the decision maker for the appeals decision is delivered to the complainant or the respondent." That's, the decision maker is a person, correct? The decision maker is not being delivered to the complain, to the complainant and the respondent.
Right.
Don't, we need to take out?
Or at the point when the decision maker for the appeals decision delivers the...
Delivers.
To the complaint.
Delivers.
I'm wondering if it's supposed to say, "She has delivered the determination to the complaint."
Something like that, yes. Or, or, or has, or, or that the decision has been delivered. Yeah, we need to change that, because it's, it's actually saying that a person's being delivered to these people. That's not what.
Jenny, have you found the spot that she's been, she's referring to?
I see the paragraph right above retaliation.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
So the last...
The second to last sentence, actually. It, it, or the person's in the paragraph.
The word is, should be changed to has. Has delivered the determination to the complaint.
Has delivered, okay. The decision maker has delivered the determination to complain and to the respondent.
Any further discussion?
So I, I think you're asking that with, with the edits that you just heard.
With that edit, yes, yeah. With that very minor edit, but it, but you can see that didn't make sense.
As an, right?
I'm going to motion to approve that.
Yeah.
Someone's got to touch on your words.
Yes. Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be my first choice.
So are we amending the motion or not?
I just, I think the, for the motion, how about include a grammatical correction?
Do we have to amend that motion? Do, do we have to vote to amend it?
Don't we have to vote to amend it, and then we do the amendment?
Well, typically, we can take care of these corrections as like a technical correction.
Okay, it doesn't have to.
So you can keep the motion that you had, and we can take care of that item as a technical correction, which does not need approval.
Doesn't require, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Time to vote.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes. Lost track here a little bit due to all that further discussion. Are we on E at this point?
Yes.
Yes, we're on the approval of healthy smiles. Would county pursuant to policy 9505 as an action item? This is a program that we've had in the district for some time now, but I think we are required to do something to reapprove that on an annual basis, correct? Move to approve. Okay, move to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Take the role, please.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Letter F, approval of personal development center pursuant to policy, also of 9505, that is an action item. To approve, move to approve by Mr. Conrad, second by Mr. Neve. Discussion?
Yes. Has this, has this one been added before?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we want to just summarize what, what the benefit is for having that? It's... Is, did I even like to describe what the Personal Development Center offers for us just while we're doing this?
Well, advocacy services, you know, I'm just looking at the description that is, you know, immediately within the Board Docs is in conjunction with the memorandum of understanding that the board is being asked to approve. But, you know, this is, as they talk about, providing support services, assisting with advocacy for students who have been involved in unhealthy or unsafe relationships, in particular, those that have unfortunately experienced sexual assault and in other acts, violent acts, including domestic violence. So this is a good opportunity for students that could use some additional assistance from outside providers to facilitate that on our school premises.
And it makes it an easier, an easier access for students who really have a need for something, for the services. Makes it much easier for them.
Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
So if I'm correct, moving on to item G, approval of the 2019-2020 Mental Health Consortium Memorandum of Understanding, also something that I believe that has to be voted on by the board on an annual basis. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.